Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, this evening, we would ask that under Section F, the first executive session for attorney-client privilege be removed from the agenda due to the absence of the attorney.
Alrighty. Next thing I'll do is open up for public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council this evening that's not on the agenda? Looking around, seeing the only participants are people on the agenda, I'll go ahead and close the public forum and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted and trusting that others have also gone through it, I would make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Consent agenda stands as passed. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move into new business right away. And the first item is ordinance number 2022-AP-18A. I'll let Ethan let us know what that's about.
Thank you. That is a check to Councilmember Homewood. He participated in the voucher program that the tree board is doing for people to plant trees on their property here in the city. So per our guidelines, we pulled that out of our normal bills and payroll, so that could be considered separately, and he could abstain. So that is what that check is for. And that program is open to all citizens within the city limit of the city of Halsted who are wanting to plant trees on their property.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve check number 119454 to Josh Homewood for $100 and approve ordinance number 2022 AP 18A.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance and check it into a governing body member. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Now we'll move on to ordinance number 1322, standard traffic ordinance 2022 update. I assume this is a housekeeping item, basically?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and just introduce both this and the next item. Both the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code basically get updated by the League of Kansas municipalities. With any legislative changes, these two ordinances essentially update both of those to the newest addition of the STO or the UPOC so that the police department can use those updated regulations and be fully in compliance with any legislative changes. This is a standard ordinance we do every year.
Are there any major changes in either of them that we need to be aware of?
Nothing came out, I mean.
Mr. Mayor, that being said, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 1322 and ordinance updating the standard traffic ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1322. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1323 and ordinance updating the Uniform Public Offense Code.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1323. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Those two items are taken care of, passed. Next on our agenda is amended petitions for sanitary sewer improvements, and I'll let Ethan bring the council up to par on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have some amended petitions for the sanitary sewer improvements and the Cedar Meadows Powers First area. Essentially, we did have the formal bid opening. The work, it's been about 10 months since we did the original petitions. We all know and have seen the inflationary pressures. Essentially, those came in at the upper limits of those original petitions. So first, the city will need to take action to approve the mayor to sign the amended petition since the Powers property is included on one of those petitions. And then we need action to accept those amended petitions. And basically, it raised the dollar amounts from, on one petition, from 70,000 to 100,000, and on the other petition, from 81,000 to 100,000. That's just to give enough leeway because things like financing costs, construction inspection, that kind of thing are also going to get tacked in to those eventual special assessments. So that should give us enough leeway to get that done. The special assessments, everything like that will be set on the actual cost, so this doesn't guarantee that the city's going to spend $200,000. It's just giving enough leeway that we can continue on with the process. The alternative, if the city doesn't accept these amended things, is either the developer has to cover the difference or the city would have to cover the difference. So that's what happens if we take no action.
Okay. Everybody good with what they've heard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the amended benefit district petition, East Side Main Street Sanitary Sewer Improvements on behalf of the city of Halsted for the city-owned property of Powers First Edition lots 1 and 4.
Second.
I should say 1 through 4, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended petition for these four lots in, what was that, District Powers Edition?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That passes.
Mr. Mayor, I would also make a motion for the city of Halsted to accept the amended petitions for the East Side Main Street Sanitary Sewer and East Side Stutzman Sanitary Sewer Improvements.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the amended petition for the East Side and the Stutzman additions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And those carry. And just a prime example of how we continue to see prices go up as it takes longer to get these projects put together. I'll be happy to get them started. Next item on our agenda is resolution number 2022-11, amended advisability resolution. Ethan, you want to bring us up to par there?
Yes. You know, go ahead and kind of cover the ordinance 1324 as well, since that's the next item. But essentially, with those amended petitions, we now have to amend the advisability resolution that we originally passed, and then the work ordinance that was also passed to reflect those new petition amounts. So resolution 2022-11 amends that original advisability resolution of 2022-02, and then ordinance 1324 will amend ordinance 1316. Again, both of these are basically, at this point, housekeeping to continue being able to assess the special assessments appropriately and reflect those increased costs.
Okay.
Well, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution number 2022-11, a resolution that amends resolution number 2022-02 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2022-11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1324, an ordinance that amends ordinance number 1316 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1324. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Both those issues carry unanimously, and we can continue working on that project. Next up, we have review of bids for water and sanitary sewer improvements. We'll let Ethan bring us in on that one, too.
Thank you. The formal bid opening was last Wednesday, September 21st. Here at City Hall, we did have six contractors that responded to it. You have the bid tabulation as provided by Mr. Fouracre in the packet, and I will turn it over to him to kind of go over those bids and what we want to do.
Mr. Mayor and council, Harland Fouracre was certified engineering design. And as Ethan mentioned, we opened bids last week after advertising for the project for about three weeks prior to that. So we think we got pretty good response out of that. Bids which, total bids including both water and sewer range from the low there, and you said they did have the bid tabs, is that right? Of 289,029 all the way up to 425,221. We think there was, the high bid obviously wasn't really too interested in the project. But the portion of it, I guess, that is accessible to the benefit district is the sanitary sewer. And the low bid there was from Meese Construction at 143,859. Now, one of the things that I did include in the bid advertisement is, because I was getting feedback from contractors and they were telling me, hey, if you were willing to accept a little varied schedule, we could probably get you a little better price depending on when they had to get the work done. And while I didn't really, I guess, expected, I guess, to be out as far as what Meese did, they gave us a start date of January 16th of 2023 with that low bid price. Now, the next one was No walk construction at 315,700, the total work, but, and they would start probably mid to late October would be their schedule that they submitted. So I think Ethan did talk with the developer, and you can tell me what their thoughts were, but as I understand it, they are okay with waiting to save the approximate $30,000 to lower the, or keep the specials on the properties as low as possible. And so I'm here to say if you're agreeable with that, then I would suggest or recommend that you accept the Meese Construction bid for the total there, 289,29. And then we can go ahead, and that allows us to go ahead and issue the notice to per notice of award. And once we get them under contract, and I've verified with this with them, that they can't raise prices then by waiting that long. So that price becomes fixed once we get them under contract. So even though we're waiting until January. So I did also ask them, well, is there a chance that that schedule could move up a little bit? And they said possibly, yes, depending on how their other work went. But it wouldn't be probably any earlier than maybe December sometime, but that all depends on what their current schedule is. So that, if the developer and the city are okay with that, my recommendation would be to accept the Meese bid for the 289,029. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I will say I really appreciate your spreadsheet, the way you have everything allocated for. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, you know, we also broke out the water and sanitary sewer portion, so you can see just exactly what the city's portion is. And again, the portion that's being special assessed, even though we had to raise the petitions to the 200,000, is 143,859. That's the actual construction cost. And then, you know, the financing, the design and inspection will be on top of that. So anyway.
Well, if there's no other questions or discussions, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept the bid from Meese Construction Incorporated for water and sanitary sewer improvements in the amount of 289,029, no, 289,029 and authorization for staff and contracted engineer to negotiate and execute contracts or other required documents as needed.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve Meese for our contractor on the water and sanitary sewer improvements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And that carries.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on from this, we had the opportunity to visit Harland and I a little bit today. And with the city, as you all know, we're also doing some waterline improvements at the Ninth and Walnut as part of that project. That's significantly smaller in scale than this, but we believe we might be able to reach out. And I believe Harland's kind of already reached out with Meese to see if they're amenable to doing the work under, you know, it'd be a separate contract, but rather than trying to go out to bid on that much smaller project and taking the chance between now and that going out to bid, I mean, this is a pretty good, pretty good recommendation. And if they're already in town doing some work, if we put it into the street work, the street contractor is basically going to subcontract it, and we're going to be paying that middleman price. So if there was no major objections, we'd like to see if we can maybe move forward and see if Meese is willing to do our Ninth.
Explore that, right?
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a, I think it's worth the effort, at least, speaking with them. We have the plans pretty well done. We're ready to send them into KDHE to start that review process. But we can go ahead and maybe get some pricing from them that I can give to Ethan, he can bring to you to consider if, they did tell me that the price, the unit price would be no more than what you see in this contract, and it might be, it might be less depending on the additional roughly 900 feet of pipe that they would need to purchase for the project. So I think it'd be a worthwhile effort, at least, let's get some pricing from them and then see if it's attractive for the city to maybe bring back for your consideration. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're just looking for consensus, right, Ethan?
Yeah.
I think you have it. So, thank you, Harland. Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and it's resolution number 2022-12, distressed property show cause hearing. Let Ethan bring us up to date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion or resolution would set a date and time for a show cause hearing regarding 126 East Third Street here in Halsted. That is, of course, the former Townsmen Motel property. I think everyone's well aware of the situation with that property. We have been, you know, dealing with the property owner for quite some time. They had asked essentially to have through Labor Day because of some potential economic activity or selling the property that might have occurred. That has not. This basically, legally, essentially, this resolution of its past must be published two weeks in a row, and the public hearing date can't be until 30 days after that second publication. So unless we have a special meeting, this basically would mean November 14th would be our show cause. In the meantime, of course, the property owners get their official notice, the list of complaints, and hopefully come to that hearing prepared to say what their action plan is, you know, on the property to either remediate the issues that are there or justify why it is not a dangerous or unfit structure or why it shouldn't be condemned or put down. So that is, what this resolution does is get the ball rolling on the Townsmen.
There are no questions. I think we all probably pretty much think in the same way on this. I would make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-12, a resolution setting a date and time for a show cause hearing regarding 126 East Third being designated as a dangerous or unfit structure.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2022-12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That passes. And let me say, I'm hopeful that we'll at least get the process started to get something done with that property. It would be nice to see something happen over there. That concludes our agenda under new business. We do have one executive session tonight, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss proprietary company information pursuant to the confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, exception KSA 754319B4, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager, the open meeting, and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:45 PM.
Second. Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We will move to the other room, council, and be in executive session.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on in our agenda and the next section's reports. And I'm gonna break it up tonight. I do have a couple of proclamations that Julie's put together for me. So I'm gonna do one now and then I'll ask for council comments and I'll do the second one. So this first proclamation is for Fire Prevention Week 2022. Whereas the city of Halsted, Kansas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Halsted. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020. According to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Halsted residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Halsted residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Halsted residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of their family members. Including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Halsted first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires. And home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Halsted residents responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape" effectively serves to remind Halsted it is important for you to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of Halsted, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. And I urge all the people of Halsted to learn the sounds of plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Halsted's Fire and Emergency Services. and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Halsted's Fire and Emergency Services. And I'd like to personally thank my wife for testing our smoke detectors on occasions when she cooks to make sure they're still working. It's a thing in our house. So we'll move to the council for comments. Report section, I'm gonna start tonight with you, Derek.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody for the Brick Street Festival coming up the week of the 7th and 8th, I believe. Hope everyone enjoys it and make sure you visit all your stores that are open.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Me?
Don't have anything this week.
Brody?
Have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you guys were just too excited to hear my next proclamation. Our next proclamation is everybody's favorite subject. It's Natural Gas Week. So this is a public natural gas week proclamation in honor of our local, community-owned natural gas utility. Whereas we, the citizens of Halsted, Kansas, place a high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit natural gas utility. And as consumers and owners of our natural gas utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas the city of Halsted provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with reliably efficient and cost-effective natural gas, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at a not-for-profit rate. And whereas City of Halsted is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the natural gas utility industry is changing and will continue to change over the next few years with the goal of allowing individual consumers to choose their power supplier while continuing continuing service from their current natural gas distributor. And whereas this concept of customers' choice in generation is a new one that will have a broad impact on and affect all parts of the natural gas utility industry, including the consumer utility relationship. And whereas this community's natural gas system, City of Halsted's first and only purpose is to work in partnership with its customer owners to furnish an essential public service and the best customer service to community citizens at lower cost rates. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Halsted will continue to work and ensure that our customers benefit from any changes in natural gas utility industry, just as it has since utility was created to serve all the citizens of Halsted. And be it further resolved that the week of October 2nd through the 8th, 2022, be designated Public Natural Gas Week in order to honor the City of Halsted for its contributions to the community and to make its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of the City of Halsted's overall contributions to their well-being. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with other public natural gas systems in the United States that ensure cost-cutting competition for natural gas customers through local community ownership. So that is our natural gas proclamation for October 3rd through the 9th. Now we'll move on to our city manager report, and when you're done with the city manager, Ethan, you can just go on into your financial.
Will do. All right. City is gearing up, as Councilmember Alannah noted, for the Arts and Crafts Fair coming up on October 7th, and then the Kansas Barn Sale, which will be here, or, excuse me, on October 8th. And then the Kansas Barn Sale will be here October 7th and October 8th as well. We did reach out to the county and we'll be borrowing those mobile signs again just to help with the increased traffic and the street closures related to that. And then just a reminder of everyone to attend those if they can, and for the mayor to remember to pick out his mayor's choice. Grant applications were submitted on behalf of the City of Halsted for the KDOT Cost Share Program, the Hazard Mitigation Grant under the brick legislation, and then we are also partnering with the City of North Newton on a seed grant application that we'll be meeting tomorrow to discuss. There's been some gas main work between Chestnut and Red Bud. There was a water main leak on 4th, kind of over by Halsted Road, that Public Works responded to and repaired. Harvey County Council of Governments has restarted, and Mayor Travis is chairing that group this year on behalf of the City of Halsted. I attended a KACM retreat in Salina. The city did enter into an agreement to do a rate study on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades with Ranson Financials, so we are in the process of getting them the raw data so they can kind of spell out those various wastewater treatment plant options and what that might look for future rates in the City of Halsted to help you guys make an informed decision on where we want to go there. And then the met with a contractor who is going to work on cleaning the north wall of the mausoleum, kind of shows what he can do. That should, work should happen this week, but something you might notice limestone just naturally gets that grime and the highway traffic helps do that, so we entered into an agreement with him to perform that, so look forward to seeing what, how that might help the mausoleum and that north wall that's kind of gone away from its natural limestone.
Who is that contractor?
It's Keith Skidmore, he's out in Newton. He's done some work for churches that have, you know, like the limestone accent walls. So figured we try, if it works, great, we might proceed around the building and if not, at least the north wall will be cleaned. Financial report, just to keep it short. You have the budget of fund summary there, as well as the breakout of the city's capital equipment and capital improvement funds on the second page. As you can see by the final column, the city remains in better cash position than compared last year. We're about 200,000 cash to the plus, the majority of that was actually in the water fund at the end of August, followed by the general fund and the gas funds. Overall, our expenses are running, you know, continue that 5% below. We're definitely seeing, as far as line items, you know, the pressures though of fuel. So again, I just really want to commend the department heads that they're cutting other areas of their budget to try and make for those increased fuel costs and supply costs we're seeing, so keeping us under budget there. Revenue is on par handled, where we've realized a lot of our revenue for the year, not a whole lot of big influx expected, sales tax collections continue to be better than expected, so that's at a boon, and then you know, a year and a half ago, I was talking about how interest rates were hurting us as far as unrealized revenue. We are seeing obviously interest rates pick up on the saving side and the balances we have in the bank, so it's been nice to kind of get that influx compared to what we budgeted 18 months ago. So overall, we're in healthy shape and obviously I'll give you a further and more robust breakdown when we end the third quarter here. Then city equipment and city capital improvement fund, just both growing balances, you can see the road improvement project balance is very healthy. Looking to those ninth and Walnut project coming up will be the large drawdown on that. And then the equipment fund continues to build balances and anticipations, so overall, we're in good shape at the end of August.
Counsel, any questions for either one of Ethan's reports this evening? If not, that concludes our agenda, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 Show same sign, that passes, we adjourn, thank you, counsel.